Berkeley Regional School Committee to order at 6:30 PM. Do notice having been posted. Let the record show that this meeting is being electronically recorded. And if anyone in the audience also wishes to electronically record this meeting, you should notify the committee at this time. Any such recording may be subject to reasonable restrictions imposed by the chair to the extent permitted under the open meeting law. Roll call, Mr. Larabee?
Here.
Mrs. Gagliardi?
Here.
Mr. Giliducci?
Here.
Mrs. Field?
Here.
And Mr. Machado and Mrs. Terror will not be here this evening. I believe Mr. Machado is out of town on business and Mrs. Terror is attending a Massachusetts Association of School Committees meeting in Plymouth. We are also pleased to have with us tonight Zachary Martin, who's a senior at the high school, who's filling in for our student representative, Kara Kneus. Kara's visiting colleges today, I understand, so glad to have Zachary here. Also with us Superintendent of Schools Jeffrey Schoonover, our Director of Business and Finance Lindsay Albinaz, our Director of Technology Stephen Leveque, and our Director of Buildings and Grounds Carlos Campos. I'd ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next scheduled meeting of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee would be, will be on Thursday, March 22, 2018, at 6:30 PM at the Somerset Berkeley Regional High School Library. That's one week from tonight, and that meeting will include our public hearing on our budget. Under Student Achievement and Learning, we will have various reports. We also will be discussing our proposed fiscal 2019 budget under Budget and Financial Matters. We will be discussing the Superintendent's Evaluation for the previous calendar year, as well as various other miscellaneous matters on our agenda. So beginning with, under Student Achievement Teaching and Learning, first is a report from our student representative. Zachary?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to start by talking about DECA. Last weekend in Boston, around 70 students from our school were there, and 51% of them, 34 kids, came in the top 10. 16 earned a spot to go to the international competition, and three more emerging leaders will be going with them. So a total of 19 students attending the international competition for DECA. Next, I'd like to talk about today at the high school, there was a bullying peer-to-peer presentation done by Ms. Nassif and the Anti-Bullying Coalition. It was a presentation for sixth and seventh graders that came and learned about how to use social media properly and uniting against bullying. The eighth graders had a separate presentation a few months ago at the middle school, but they also came today, and a student from Bridgewater State University spoke to them about similar matters. Also, a little while back, boys' basketball made it to the second day of our tournament for the first time in five years, which was very good, and they won their first playoff game in the last five years. So that's very good. Next, I'd like to talk about the dodgeball tournament. It was a great experience for many students. A lot of kids really looked forward to it, and it was unifying because there was drums alive at halftime with the unified kids, and it was a great time for many people. One thing I would like to comment on is kids understand that it's very hard to reschedule things, but I have heard from some of the basketball kids that they feel that they were almost punished in a way because when they won that playoff game that I said that they had won, this next game in the series was the day of the dodgeball tournament, and they just felt like they were upset about it. And all of us realized that it's very hard to reschedule things, they just were upset about it, and I want to say that that is something that a lot of students have been talking about. Finally, I'd like to talk about the walkout that happened recently on Wednesday, February 28th. Principal Mr. Lanzinski went over the intercom, and he said that he was going to walk out of the school, and if students wanted to, they could join him, but in no way was it a mandatory thing that students had to do. Then when everyone who decided to go outside went outside, he made it clear that there was no political intentions and that it wasn't an anti-gun walkout, it was to support Florida and to honor the kids that had fallen. That's all that happened.
Thank you very much. Next is Superintendent's Report.
Okay, as is usually the case, there's a few things ahead on my list that the student representative also speaks about. I was just going to mention the walkout, first of all, since that has occurred since our previous meeting. Zach obviously just touched upon that. We did have, we received a number of calls, emails after that, mostly to Mr. Lanzinski, some who were very upset that it occurred, others in full support of what happened. I guess the information that was out was a little, I'm not sure if there was some misunderstanding about it, but some people thought it was an anti-gun protest, which it wasn't. And as Zachary just said, Mr. Lanzinski was clear about saying that. It wasn't about guns, it was about really honoring the lives of those that were lost in Parkland. And really because we knew, actually yesterday, although we had a snow day, we all saw on the news yesterday about these national walkouts that were taking place. And superintendents from not just around here, but throughout the Commonwealth and throughout the country, I know, and principals, were debating about how to handle this. You know, giving kids the opportunity to have, you know, the moment where they're honoring and remembering what happened, but also doing so in a manner that's not so prescribed, and letting everyone know that we're walking out of the building at 10:00 AM on such-and-such date, that's just not safe for kids either. So this was the way that Somerset Berkeley decided to allow that moment to still happen without happening what would have been yesterday. As Zachary also mentioned, today we have this anti-bullying presentation here. For the past few years, I have worked with Mrs. Nassif, who is the school adjustment counselor here at the high school, and who's in charge of the Big Buddies group, the Anti-Bullying Coalition group. And last year, she came and brought her students to each of the elementary schools in Somerset to give an anti-bullying presentation. And it's great because the high school students put on skits and role-play different scenarios that the students will find themselves in, whether they're in elementary school, middle school, or high school. And they always start out with a situation of bullying, or something that's just not really appropriate behavior. They talk about what it is that was incorrect, and then they redo the same situation in a proper manner. And then there's a follow-up discussion on that. Today, we brought the sixth and seventh graders here to the high school. Rather than sending the high school to the middle school, we brought our middle school kids here, which is something else that we've been talking about, making sure that they have as many experiences under this roof as possible. So the sixth and seventh graders first came in the morning, and then they were brought back, and then our eighth graders came, and they had a separate presentation since Zach said they already saw that role-play situation earlier this year. And another aspect of this, I'm not sure if you've ever heard of the documentary called Screenagers?
No.
It's by the filmmaker and physician Delaney Ruston. She is out of, I believe, Stanford Training Doctor, and she's somewhere on the West Coast, but she does a lot of research with different education-based things related to teenagers from a physician's point of view, and then produces documentaries on it. Screenagers was her most recent, most popular one. We're actually hoping to get to hosting a showing of Screenagers soon at the high school. But in filming her next documentary, her emphasis is on these peer-to-peer models, where students will do things just as our kids did today. And Ann Nassif is very much connected to the Mark Center at Bridgewater State University, which is the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center. And the Mark Center is really nationally known. They are leader in anti-bullying presentations, and the research that they do is just incredible. And Dr. Ruston heard about Ann's program here, and what she's done last year with the elementary students, as well as what she's done, what our kids have done. I think every year you do a presentation for the high school students, right? Beginning of the school year? So anyway, she heard about this peer-to-peer model that's happening here, and wants to have Somerset Berkeley in her next documentary. So it'll be one of the models that she focuses on. So they were actually filming part of the presentation that also took place today.
Congratulations.
Yeah, so it was very good to be recognized, for Ann and her kids to be recognized for that, and then to also showcase our kids and our school on, you know, hopefully it'll get some good airtime on that documentary.
Excellent.
Let's see, we've had, since we had the previous two days off, I just want to update everyone. The last day of school is now Monday, June 25th. Let's see, we have a lot of activities going on in the building tonight. Hopefully, some of you were able to go catch the, some of the art exhibits that are up tonight. There was an art gallery opening from 6 to 7. We have the grade 5 to 12 all-district band concert taking place tonight. And then related to art, we also have Mrs. Trutman's Envisioning Somerset, which is now Re-Envisioning Somerset in Berkeley. And there's going to be an exhibit at the Somerset Historical Society by our Advanced Digital Photography Students on March 29th.
I just spoke to her, she might change it here.
She might, right, because that's actually the night of our special town meeting, I believe.
I think it's Canidite's Night.
Oh, Canidite's Night, that's what it is. So she and I were talking about that, like, we're already going to have people coming, so that would be a perfect event to actually happen here around and there, but I know that hasn't been confirmed just yet, I don't think.
She just talked me about, so she'll put it on social media once she confirms it.
Perfect. So save the date anyway, March 29th. We also had a roadmap to college planning, which I announced at a previous meeting that was supposed to happen, I think, on Tuesday night. That was canceled due to the snow, and has been rescheduled for April 5th at 6:30 here in the Performing Arts Center. Last Friday night, we had a really great fundraiser here at the high school. It was for Johnny Mastriano. He's an eighth-grade student at Somerset Middle School. He'll be a student here next year, but he's been fighting cancer, and there was just a great community event where the Somerset Lions Club was really key in creating this, along with David Berardi. A number, there were too many people to thank and recognize, but obviously Home Depot was another big one, Smith School Dance. But it was a wonderful event where we had hundreds of people in the soup dining center. There was some entertainment taking place in the Performing Arts Center. It was just, it was nice to see this building being used also, and the community coming together to support one of our own. And lastly, I did want to just mention a course, and this is really connected to one of the, one of the actions in our strategic plan, which is the Capstone Project for seniors. We do have a three-credit class that we're going to be piloting for next year. Currently, in the senior year, all of our seniors write a research paper in their English class, so we're going to be connecting this three-credits Capstone Project class with their senior class, with their senior English class. And it helps students to further acquire and demonstrate all of those skills that we keep stressing, problem-solving, critical reading and writing, collaboration, and so on. So we are creating that, we're going to be announcing that to students very soon, so that in this time of the year where kids are picking, our juniors are picking classes for next year, that is an option for them. Components of this will be working with a mentor, or possibly an internship, creating products, performance, or something to that effect, maintaining a portfolio of their work along the way. Hoping to schedule it during the last period of the day, or at least if there are opportunities that meet during the last period of the day, so that kids can also possibly leave at, when does last period begin?
1:05.
1:05, and then go, you know, beginning a mentor, mentoring opportunities then, or internship if that's what it is. So something like that. So we're in the works, but we will be announcing that to students very soon, so that they have that opportunity to pick that class, and we'll pilot for next year and make some adjustments, see how it goes. But excited to do that, since that's one of the things that we've been talking about for the past two years.
So Jeff, the three-credit class, the Capstone Project, they'll be given a grade for that?
Yes.
Is that how that works? Okay. And will it affect any of the classes that they've already picked, or they're already looking at?
They may have to. It depends if students have, they're currently picking their classes now. I know my daughter picked her classes, I think, last week perhaps. So if there's room in their schedules already, that's something that they can, if they have, say, five or six studies
Yep.
over the course of a semester, they can pick that instead, and then just reduce their number of studies, or they may choose to take that rather than another three-credit elective that they may have already identified.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So when that program is announced, could we put it on our agenda again, so that we can get a more complete description?
Yes.
Of it? So if we can put that under
Action items.
Action items for future meetings. I also, on the middle school students that were here for the anti-bullying program, were any students from the Berkeley Middle School involved in that?
They were not, no.
Were they offered the opportunity?
I don't, I'm the one who, as the Somerset Superintendent, asked the high school students to give this presentation to my middle school students.
Okay. Maybe we should think in the future about including, or at least inviting, the Berkeley Middle School students. The other thing I wanted to ask is something I know absolutely nothing about, but it's apparently a new phenomenon, drooling. Is that the correct term? Drooling?
Yes.
It's like vaping, like
Yes.
Like smoking.
I did talk about it.
It's like the name of one of the types of vapes, like it's a drool.
And apparently, it can be done very surreptitiously, even within the classroom. So I'm wondering if our administration is aware of that, and what steps might be taken to address it. So if you're not familiar with the term, maybe we can
I'm not familiar with the term, but I am familiar with some of the instruments that kids are using for vaping, whereas some of them are in the shape of USB drive for their computers. And, you know, so what instrument they're using to vape is actually sitting right there besides their Chromebook, or in their pocket. So they've, I know the industry has gone very creative in making these instruments look like something that they would use right there in the classroom, and our administration is aware of that. But that actual term, I'll look into that and see how that's any different.
I thought we had something in our policy about vaping.
Well, I think we do, but I'm just, I'm just wondering what, whether it's an issue here, and what we, what's being done to address it if it is, so maybe we can put that as an action item on a
It's, I would say it's an issue, it's a growing, I would say it's a growing concern by administrators, but it's also, unlike tobacco or cigarettes, kids can do it, and they can be, they can hide it very, very well, and it's, makes it very difficult to even recognize if someone has recently vaped, or whether it's in a bathroom or a classroom or anything else.
Well, maybe it's, since it wasn't a term that it appeared you weren't familiar with, that Mrs. Sheen wasn't, maybe it's something that ought to be discussed at a faculty meeting, or something, just to make our faculty aware of the issue, and
It was not often that you were the coolest guy in our community.
That's for sure. That is for sure. Okay. So, the next item we have on the agenda is to consider approval of attendance by qualified students to the Distributive Education Clubs of America DECA International Competition, I'll go back to that, in Atlanta, Georgia, on April 21st to 25th. So I know, Mr. Giliducci, you're really excited about the success that our students achieved at the state competition last weekend, so maybe you'd like to introduce our DECA students and
Michael Gagliardi, co-president for next junior class, Sarah Wilson, co-president of the senior class. And they'll talk, I'll listen.
All right. So we're currently going to send, well, 19 students have qualified to compete in the ICDC International Career Development Conference in Atlanta, Georgia, and last year, we sent only nine. So we've had 10 more kids that are actually going to this conference. I believe everyone has our folder, where I have developed a spreadsheet of the estimated total expenses based on prices that DECA has provided for us. Obviously, we hope to kind of dissipate these costs, as it is extremely expensive. And we have begun fundraising already, in addition to using what we have made in the school store. We really are extremely fond of this program. I mean, we think it's great to give kids an opportunity to learn about business skills and interview skills that they really wouldn't get anywhere else. And the fact that we've had 16 total to qualify, 19 total to make it, based off of leadership spots, where there is a separate leadership academy, I think, we think it's phenomenal, and we really hope that you approve this trip. Also in there, we have an itinerary, the DECA registration packet that they also have provided each chapter. We plan on going up Saturday, April 21st. We're leaving at the TF Green Airport, and then arriving in Atlanta. Our hotel is the Omni Hotel at the CNN Center, and, which is one of the nicer hotels there, and it's, it's pretty sweet. We will actually get to compete in the Mercedes-Benz Stadium as well, which is brandly newly constructed, rather, and where the Atlanta Falcons play, so that's also a pretty cool opportunity for us. In addition to that, we have looked at certain events to try to keep ourselves busy, so we don't get into trouble. We have a, there is a DECA night at Pemberton Place, where Pemberton Place is closed off, which is to only DECA students, and where you can go visit the aquarium, and there's like a Coca-Cola factory exhibit there, in addition to many other cool exhibits, so we will spend a night there. In addition to that, DECA has provided us with tickets to an exclusive concert. We don't, we don't know the keynote artists quite yet, but they will release those at the time of the concert, which is pretty cool. We went to, we went to similar, similar events last year, where in Anaheim, we got a chance to go to Universal Studios, and we also went to the concert as well, and those are both really great experiences. It's really cool to have a place just close off and just be high school kids your age from all over the place, and you can really start to mingle and learn about different cultures, I mean, even from people all over the world, I mean, Canada, North Korea, I mean, not North Korea, South Korea.
Antarctica.
Antarctica?
Yeah, people from
Oh yeah, Antarctica.
Antarctica.
But it's, it's really cool to just kind of mingle with people from all over the world. Alaska is why I was
Timbergris.
Yeah.
Alaska, not Antarctica.
North Pole, Alaska, was actually the town they were from.
Oh, yeah.
And yeah, so that was pretty cool, and it's just really nice to have an opportunity, yeah. It's really nice to have an opportunity to meet and mingle with all these students, in addition to furthering our competition as well, where these kids have worked hard, and we put a lot of time and effort into our, our role plays and our test scores, and we're looking to continue further that work, hopefully play some, place at internationals, which I believe Somerset Berkeley has not done yet. But we're going to be the first. Do you have any questions?
Anyone have any questions? I have a couple. What will the cost per student be?
I believe it says there it's around $1,274 from the original.
Oh yes, okay, I see.
However, due to our current fundraising, we have managed to lower the cost to $752.39. So already, not even a weekend, we've already managed to cut the cost by $500. And we have six more weeks to fundraise. I just had a meeting with Somerset Federal Credit Union earlier this afternoon, and they granted us a $500 donation, in addition to talks about possibly selling some school apparel and stuff like that to help further fundraising. In addition to that, all 19 of our students have reached out to businesses with a, all of them have a letter that they sent out asking for donations, and considering different opportunities where we might also be able to fundraise. Our ultimate goal is to have this cost be free to the students. However, if you look at the Excel spreadsheet I have highlighted, both food and transportation to and from the hotel, the food aspect is one aspect we are talking about, just having kids pay for themselves due to the variety amounts that kids spend on food, you know? Last year, I spent $30 on breakfast every day, and then girls might have split a bagel and a bottle of water, and it kind of varies between each person, so that's certainly something that we are, once fundraising continues to go on, we are talking about changing as well.
So we enjoyed the breakfast buffet, is what it was.
Yeah, I'd hop right across the street, it was a bad idea.
Okay, so the other question that I always ask, which I don't see covered here, is how many chaperones will you have?
We have six chaperones going, in comparison to 92.
I see, I'm sorry, they are listed six. And has the principal approved that number?
I believe
There was some question the last time I raised that question, and it's clear that our cost
There was one question of Ms. Nicole Copeland, who is a teacher here, and I believe Ms. Erin said she got confirmation, I'm not 100% sure on that, but if you would like, I can send you an email once we get confirmation.
Well, we just need, we just need to know that the principal has approved the number of chaperones, because that's specifically provided
Yes.
in our policy on overnight trips. So sometimes, or we have in the past approved it, subject to receiving the principal's approval, that the number of chaperones is adequate?
Yes.
It is.
Has, he has
We have had that conversation.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
And so parents, just for clarification, they've been, they've been given this information so they know what's entailed on their end, they'll be giving sign-off sheets and
Yeah, they're actually in the parent meeting right now.
It was highly
And we gave them all, each student has their own folder, and in the folders, we put a whole new packet today with the permission slip required by DECA and the Somerset Berkeley permission slip, and then we also have some information about the trip in the folder.
In addition to that, all parents are fully knowledgeable and sent away that if we are unable to fundraise for the entire cost, they will be required to pay the difference.
Good luck with the fundraising.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve participation in the International Career Development Conference in Atlanta. Second. Motion made by Mrs. Gagliardi and seconded by Mr. Larabee. Any further discussion? Absence of discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, good luck.
Mr. Field, to make knowledge that Ms. Erin, who has just come in To make knowledge that Ms. Air, who has just come in. Ms. Air, you want to take a bow, please?
Take a bow.
Thank you for all your, all the work you do.
Thank you. They do it, it's not named visual.
Well, I think you have some part in it.
Yes.
And actually, I would also point out that the commitment of Mr. and Mrs. Giliducci never ceases to amaze me. You can't come to an event here, as a matter of fact, I would suspect that Mrs. Giliducci is probably down there selling jewelry right now for the benefit of...
She was obviously very passionate and she's down there trying to sell stuff.
Yes, she is.
And we have all nineteen students will be at their home on Sunday for a family reunion meeting. Oh, she is. I wish she was. Thank you for allowing us the honor and privilege of being with the students.
Well, thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
And one final matter under student achievement, teaching and learning. We have a citation for Eagle Scout Jacob the Yellow. The members of our committee signed the citation and I was able to attend the Eagle Scout Court of Honor on Sunday. Jacob's a member of the junior class here. He's an honor roll student and he's also an accomplished musician. His Eagle Scout project was to organize a summer band program for middle school students, which he organized and carried through on for two summers and he intends to do it again this summer, even though he's already been awarded the Eagle Scout rank. So, it was a very nice afternoon. I was particularly excited to be there because it turned out that Jacob's great-grandfather was scout master of mine, Troop Two in Somerset, and kind of set me on the path to becoming an Eagle Scout. So, it was...
Troop Two?
Yes. So, anyway, I would just like to have us formally approve the citation, which everyone has previously signed. So, may I have a motion to that effect?
So, move.
Second. Motion made by Mrs. Field and seconded by Mr. Larrabee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. We'll just take a momentary recess of our meeting. All right, so I'm going to ask at this time if there are any matters of public input. We may return to public input at the end of our meeting, but if there are any members of the public that have any public input at this time? Yes?
I'd like to ask questions in regards to the walkout. I emailed both Mr. Schoonover and the principal the evening of it and met with the principal. He was gracious enough to meet with me the next morning. I know you couldn't make it, I understand on short term, but I do have some...
Did you just identify yourself?
Yes, Dirk Fogg. I have a student here at Somerset Berkeley High School, taxpayer in town, fellow community member with all, I've seen you many Eagle Scout nest and appreciate your support to all the boys. But I have some serious concerns about how it was put forth and I really am questioning the oversight on it. So, I'll start with this. It's my understanding that you were requested or instigated, it's not the word, that the nucleus of the start of this came from an email from the Mass Teachers Association? That they were encouraging walkouts? And that's what the principal led me to believe and I know Mr. Liggins, he's not here to verify that, so it's, I'm not here to play court, but I am...
I am the union president and I...
Mrs. Sheehan?
Yeah.
Let me, let me ask that we proceed this way. If you could do your presentation?
Right, and then...
And will Mr. Schoonover can make note of what questions you might have on Mrs. Sheehan?
And then... And so, I'm curious about that. Quite honestly, as a, you know, a member of the community, I'd like to be able to see it, if that's possible. I'd ask for that to be disclosed, if that's where it came from. My first comment to the principal was, you know what, if this were spontaneous walkout by our students, I wouldn't be here as a parent. Okay? Because I think it is, you know, the students taking on that, I can understand that. Unfortunately, the walkout was created, he told me he did not contact the faculty, he only talked to a small team, I think about 10 people, that are on his emergency response team. Again, it were something put forth by the teachers' union, the teachers weren't asked to do this, you know, what was the input? We were notified after the press. He told me he only notified one press outlet, there were multiple. Fortunately, some of the local press have said that the Somerset Berkeley students and staff did have a gun protest. That was printed in the Times Gazette, I don't know if that's been retracted or asked to be retracted. In his email that came out the next day, he did a nice job of explaining where his thoughts were and I'm 1,000% behind that he was trying to move in such a way to look after our students. Unfortunately, my real question here, multiples come, but question, if we were trying to convey that we had concerns to state and national leaders, what were those concerns? Were they mentioned? I haven't seen anything. And I know in other communities locally, our local state reps were happy to sit with staff, leadership of our communities, and parents to talk about these issues. I know it's affected our students, it's affected us as parents. And I think to have it go the way it did without parents being consulted is a very poor thing. It doesn't sit with your core principles at Somerset Berkeley Regional High School. Safety, critical thinking, being active members in community. I understand that from talking with the principal that he does not believe his actions were political. Unfortunately, the overall actions are. It doesn't matter what side, I don't, I'm not saying what side I believe in, but this whole movement is a political movement. And if it's been pushed from outside of our school, if it was not started from our students, then I really feel that the students were used knowingly or unknowingly. And I think that no retraction from poor media, if what you both said tonight, hey, this had nothing to do with guns, great. I think there was a better way it could have been done. I don't think it really represented the students, I don't think it involved the parents and our students' safety. While I know that was the decision to move it to a different date, don't question that. I think it still lacks that critical thinking and that concern to the community. And I just really, we need to have some oversight with this. We need to have parental input. You know, what are, and I'm aware that there are probably some things that you've talked about, maybe will come up tonight or hopefully will come out in the local media about, you know, what are our schools' responses to a situation like this? What do we do in the first five minutes? The next five minutes don't matter. It's that first five minutes. And to have used our children knowingly or unknowingly is a poor way to represent this great town and what you won't do when you do a great job. Okay, I think of me, my kid is really excited to be here every day. That's a great thing. He wasn't that day. And so, I'm not sure if there was really a clear, open discussion and I don't think that your idea really got through. I think it fell flat. So, I just, I needed to put that out there again to see the email. I'm curious if this came from outside. Again, if it came from the teachers' union, the teachers' union wasn't asked, were we representing them? So, just, you know, pieces that way. I mean, I'd love, it's why I asked for that meeting. I'd rather have a discussion than sit here in a formal forum, but I do think it has to be formal as well and public. You know, there is no, did we take attendance when the kids went out and came back in? Do we know how many went out and didn't? Did everybody come back in or did anybody go home? I don't know. And so, these are all safety issues, critical thinking issues. We're trying to teach our young students to be active in our community and about their safety. Let's give them a real forum. Let's invite our local politicians from up on Beacon Hill to come and sit with them. They come to everything they're asked to for scouts and other communities. They're always here for our community and their local representatives. Let's have them sit down and let our high school students talk to them. Then we have true representation and interaction, not some political TV stuff. If we really wanted to honor those people that were lost in Parkland, there's a different way to do that than to raise our hands in a fist and have a bunch of chants. There's a different way. And if we want to really engage our youth in helping to shape our society, then we should do it proactively and not as player and pawns to an outside representation. Again, I don't care what side you sit on, that's a different thing. I'm talking about this as a parent. The political perspective was not seen. And if it wasn't, then that was more political than, than for oversight, I believe. It's just my opinion, but... Thank you.
If you'd like to...
So, could...
I'd be more than happy to forward the MTA email, motion to you.
Wonderful, thank you. Would you like me to write it down, please? Thank you so much. Wonderful, appreciate it.
So, Mr. Schoonover, do you have any comments?
Well, I was going to say I will gladly get you the MTA request. Mrs. Sheehan is going to give that to you. It was just not the MTA, but it was, I'm not sure if you've seen all, well, as of yesterday, you probably have, it's not the coverage that this was getting. And the word was moving around with our student population as well. They had heard from the media about what was the scheduled walkout on 3/14 at 10:00 a.m. Our students were beginning to talk about that. We knew that the teachers were given a request from their state president encouraging teachers to participate in that walkout as well. So, it really came down to a safety decision or a decision on student safety and do we want all of our kids to be going out at the same time and knowing that if there is, I mean, just the what-ifs, if there is someone out there and, no. But so, I mean, that is what was driving the decision to give students the opportunity, but not at that time so that, you know, it wasn't, no one knew. That's why parents weren't informed ahead of time either. It was just something that was more spontaneous. You know, obviously, there was some planning that took place within the high school to do that, but without broadcasting, nothing was going to happen.
And yet, and I'll ask, if I may, ask to follow-ups of that. Did the students formally, student government formally come up and ask for this, to be involved with it?
I don't know.
Okay, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I understand. And I do understand the decision to move the date in time. Why was it illegal? If we really wanted to contact, if the point of communication was to contact and talk to our state representatives, I would have invited them. Media had no business being here. Our students were used by an outside force for their political agenda. Again, I don't care which side you sit on, this is the students being used as pawns and that's a poor way to use our students. If our students are marching, as I said when I started, if our students initiated this on their own and we're out there and you all as faculty and administrators were following them going, hey, guys, we're going to keep you safe, awesome. That means our kids were really working independently, being independent, critical thinkers. If we're leading them, if we're suggesting things, we're doing things differently. Not sure that's really where we're supposed to be founded.
Michael?
Hi, this is you, and I really appreciate what you have to say and saying that I really agree that we should be meeting with lawmakers and politicians and I think that'd be awesome. But me personally, and I think the general consensus of the student body is that we were not being used. The general consensus is that we were going to go out on this walkout that was supposed to happen on the 14th. And Principal Landzinski did give the opportunity for students to stay within the building. He wasn't forcing anyone to go and he made sure to state during his speech at the center of the football field that this was not a political, this was not a political thing. It was meant to, it was meant to honor the students who have passed away in this terrible tragedy. In addition, as a call for change, he clearly said, stated that it was not a gun protest. This was not a politically pushed agenda. Like, he meant it as an honoring of these students in addition to looking that as educators and as students, we need to feel safe in our schools. And I think that was more of his, that was more his idea and that was more his agenda behind it was that as students and educators, and I believe everyone, students and educators can both agree that we want to feel safe in our schools. And if things like what happened in Parkland are happening around, obviously, you're going to get a little scared. Like, some kids aren't going to want to go to school and like, if you look on social media, kids are wondering, I don't want to wear my light-up Skechers anymore because then if there is someone, if there is an intruder, they might see me because of the Skechers. Like, we don't want our kids to feel like that anymore. And I think that Mr. Landzinski did a great thing because all the students were planning on walking out on March 14th. We even had SBRIS alumni wanting to come back to march with us. And I feel this was a much safer and a much safer opportunity for students to show their support for students in Parkland, which is why the media was there to help broadcast out, we stand with Parkland, because that was the day that they went back to school. And that obviously would have been a very hard time for them to do because after experiencing that, going back to school would be extremely different. So, I do agree with what you have to say where we should sit down with lawmakers and that's really where the change is going to start, but I believe Mr. Landzinski did not use the students as pawns for his agenda and I believe that it was a widely accepted protest where students weren't forced to go out on the football field, they're given the opportunity to stay within the school in the Performing Arts Center where attendance was taken books before leaving the class and after returning. And I believe that it was just a very well-thought-out protest and I believe most of the student body has a lot of support for Mr. Landzinski.
Thank you. It's nice to hear that from a student, well, so... Thank you.
If I could just, if I could come in on this. I appreciate both perspectives on that because I think that this is a strong learning opportunity because you hear it from the student's perspective, but also as part of a community, we have the parent's perspective as well. And I think that we have to work and use it on how that is. Going forward, as a school committee, I would like to be informed too when we're doing anything in this type of realm. I think the school committee has enough discretion where that if administration or leadership said, you know, we need to keep this low-key, I think we have all expressed and have been able to show that we have the discretion to do that. And especially as local leaders, we would like to be there to support too. And not only to support, but field questions when parents come to us since we are the liaison between the administration and the public, to be able to answer those questions and to be armed with exactly why we're doing it and what the reason is behind that. So, I appreciate you coming to make comments and if this is to go forward, I think that having these healthy dialogues are so healthy for communities, that's what's going to bring us closer, but I think we just have to make sure that all the parties are informed.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Saber. I have two children here at a high school and this is when asked for the walkout, obviously, but they were under the impression that it was based on support. So, they walked out in support of those Florida victims. When I got the email and I brought them, they came home and we had a discussion about it and I asked them to look up the walkout because this walkout here on the 28th was to mirror the other walkouts. That's the email I got back from Mr. Landzinski when I was questioning why this happened and why it wasn't notified. So, when they looked at it, they were horrified that they were used and lied to because the original agenda was a political agenda. Regardless of what was said here with Mr. Landzinski saying that it wasn't and it wasn't, it wasn't about guns and it wasn't about any type of political agenda, I get that, but the cause he mirrored, when he said, I am walking out, those were his words, I am walking out and anyone, staff and students, they can voluntarily, voluntarily come with me, I'm going to the football field. He led that and he's pushing those agenda onto our children. And that was very upsetting to me because I planned on keeping my kids home on the 14th because I don't want them to be any pawns, I want them... works and how people say things but mean something else. And that's what I felt happened on that day, that he said, and he may have all the greatest intentions of the support for the victims, I get that, I totally support that, an assembly would have been better, where all students could participate in honoring those victims, not just walking out. Because walking out is a protest. It's not educating our students. So those were my concerns. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And they love it here.
I just want to thank you again, all of you, because I thought this was a really good dialogue, because we don't always see it from the other side. And I think that this, this was very eye-opening for me to understand the different perspectives. And I think it was very valuable, the way that you presented it, certainly things we should keep in mind for the future. And I think that it, we still have the door open for the great kids that are here to, to have that opportunity to collectively decide their own path and how they're going to do it. So I really, really appreciate the way that you presented your concerns. I think it's valuable and appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No. Thank you. All right. So, under budget and financial matters, why don't we, are there any questions about the monthly invoices? If not, I'd ask you to sign the warrants before you leave the meeting. That brings us to our fiscal year 2019 budget discussion, the report of the Budget Subcommittee.
Yes. So, yep. So I'm going to turn the presentation over to Mrs. Alvanes. We at one of our previous meetings did talk about some of the key issues that we've been talking about in budget meetings. And I think if you look at the information that's going to be presented, I think the goal was to follow what has been laid out in our strategic plan. So as we develop what our key objectives or priorities are, we recognize that we've got to be mindful of what economic realities are facing, both towns that we serve. And so there are some, you'll see shifts in funding in order to make room for those new priorities, which we feel, based on our strategic plan and input that we've gotten from the community, these are areas that we need to work on. So I think it was a very well-thought-out budget, a lot of back and forth. Some of it you'll see is dictated by just where we are in this building and not expiration of warranties and things like that. Some of it, just regular increases that happen in insurance costs, et cetera. So I'll let Lindsay go through the detail there. So thank you.
So this has been, as it usually is in the past, it's about a four to five month process to get the Somerset Berkeley Regional School District's budget set, as it's an intended number. You have the presentation in front of you, so if some of the slides are a little bit too small for you to read on the screen, you have them on your printout. So the strategic plan, mission statement for the high school is, the Somerset Berkeley Regional High School community inspires and guides everyone to inquire, adapt, persevere, and innovate. So it always comes back to our mission statement as well as our strategic plan here. I really struggled with a theme for this year, and thanks to a few of my counterparts in central office, they said you're overthinking it. The plan is to just stay the course. We have the plan set, and that really was impactful for me because I'm always trying to, you know, I feel like last year was a little bit, you know, bumpy as far as getting the budget set, but we're staying the course. So we're, we're considering financial impact on existing initiatives, you know, specifically as it relates to the one-to-one devices, how it relates to our funding strategies going forward, our projections. And so we're, we're just doing that for FY19. I'm not going to read in detail the strategic objectives here, but as you can see, number four is the most important from my perspective, which is sustainable funding models, support the goals of the district, AKA the strategic plan, by improving efficiencies, developing key performance indicators, and constructing a model of sustainable funding. So, so some of the questions is what drives a budget. Obviously, staffing and labor is approximately 75% of our budget, as it is in most school districts, and that includes insurance and benefits. We only had an increase of six students from prior year. That does not include school choice students. As Mrs. Gaglari indicated, we did have a bump up in our technology funding needs due to some licenses expiring that were purchased with the initial building project budget. So FY19 is the year that a lot of these five-year softwares were expiring, and we have to pick them up in our budget. Special education, including transportation, is always one of the largest items in our budget, approximately 15% if you include transportation in there, and obviously, the current fiscal climates in both member towns, Somerset and Berkeley. One of the new initiatives or positions that we're requesting for FY19 is an additional school adjustment counselor. We do have one full-time school adjustment counselor at the high school. To say the least, she is completely overwhelmed with the needs of the students. We're seeing increased numbers of student cases with autism spectrum disorder, neglect and abuse, which is very sad, depression and anxiety, as well as eating disorders. We have seen some students being hospitalized this year due to some of these disorders. So there is a need with the high school students to have an additional support person that is accessible in the high school right now. So we have put this in as a new position for FY19, and we're hoping that it will develop the social-emotional skills of the students, but also help to provide strategies to teachers on how to better help these students in the classroom, so they can also be used as a resource for student support. One new thing, our second new thing for the FY19 budget is to request both member towns to allow us to establish a special education stabilization fund. This was part of the 2016 Modern Municipal Act, Modernization Act, I'm sorry, where we can set aside a stabilization fund that we can dip into in the event that we have unanticipated tuitions or transportation or medical therapeutic expenditures for special education students. It's a two-part process. I'm not going to read the entire slide, but you have it in front of you. One is to establish the fund. That's one vote at both town meetings. The second one is to fund the fund. We did do this at Somerset K8 level last year, the special time meeting in December, I think that was, and we voted to establish it as one vote, and we also voted to fund it at $100,000 for the first year. We can decide how we want to replenish that on a year-to-year basis, but we did put in, as part of the operating assessment, a first-time $100,000 funding for this fund. We are seeing some, if you were around last year, we had a significant increase in our special intuitions at the last minute in our FY18 budget, so it'd be nice to have some sort of a buffer that we can dip into if we have to. To spend this money, we do need to get the approval of both towns' Board of Selectmen as well as the vote of the school committee. I don't anticipate that being a problem. I think I'm pretty good with being transparent with our special education needs and what we have budgeted versus what the actual expenses are, so. This is the FY19 preliminary, Chapter 70 Foundation Budget. It's not anything new that you haven't seen before. I'll stand up. So we have, our October 1st, 2017 enrollment is 985. That does exclude school choice students. The numbers in red are prior year numbers, just so you can kind of see what the fluctuation is. Essentially, our foundation budget breaks out the types of students that we have, what each student is allotted per type of student, whether it's a regular high school student, an ELL student, or a vocational student. So we have 941 regular ed, one ELL, and 43 vocational programs. The state also gives us 3.75% of our total enrollment for special education in district students and 1% of our out-of-district, of our total enrollment for out-of-district, which is nine. The actual out-of-district students for FY19 is projected to be 22 students. So assuming only in the foundation budget, one of the flaws is that the state does not fund what is needed for the cost of special education out-of-district costs. Another thing that I wanted to put in here is the foundation budget for employee benefits is $1,045,442. Our actual budgeted amount for benefits and fixed charges is $2.5 million for FY19. So that is one of the formula flaws that the state is aware of, and hopefully, we'll see some movement over the next 10 years in that.
Just giving them a chance.
Concerned of 10 years, yes. That's my, so one other thing is the special ed tuitions is the bottom line, $222,000. Like I said, our actual costs for special ed out-of-district is over $1 million, so. All in, the state is giving us a foundation budget of $10,993,00618 for FY19. There are three components to the foundation budget. Basically, it's calculated based on enrollment trends, which is your enrollment, what types of students, how many you have in total, how many are economically disadvantaged, how many are vocational, et cetera, et cetera. The other number is what the local contribution is required to meet at net school spending. Combination of those two is what gets you to your foundation budget, and then Chapter 70 kicks in, the difference between what the member towns can afford and what the state is requiring us to spend on a minimum basis. So the Chapter 70 reduces the town of Somerset and Berkeley's assessment. So this was a slide that I know some of the school committee members liked when Mr. Ram O'Donnell went out to Berkeley's forum, I guess we'd call that, right?
We're supposed to call them meetings, and people get upset.
Meetings, sorry. There, it was a meeting.
Informational meetings.
Informational meetings. It was in February, I'm not exactly sure of the date, but he is the, one of the directors there, and he came out and did a great presentation on net school spending, on what Somerset spending is, what Berkeley spending is, and what Somerset-Berkley spending is. So this grid is pretty, this is just all of the regional school districts in the state of Massachusetts. As you can see where the red arrow is, that's where Somerset-Berkley falls. The difference is what the local contribution is required to spend, or, I'm sorry, support for the foundation budget, and the state aid number is the orange line. So we're about in a 50/50 swap as far as what our required net school spending number is. The member towns are paying half of it, Chapter 70's paying the other half. That is, there is a difference between what we're actually spending, so I'll go into that afterwards. Foundation budget versus net school spending. This is the history of the regional school districts' spending as far as what we are actually spending versus what we are required to spend. As you can see, the orange, I'm sorry, the blue line is our foundation budget, which goes back to that larger grid that I showed. Chapter 70 is what the state kicks in, and the white dotted line, which if you can't see it on here, I'll point it out to you, is, this is what we're required, so that's why it kind of follows the foundation budget. It's very similar to, foundation budget is essentially what your net school spending number is. The black line is where our actual spending is. So you can see, based on these percentages, where the regional school district falls historically, as far as what we're spending historically, and how far above net school spending that we are.
This is where I always like to reinforce the fact that net school spending and foundation budget, those formulas are flawed, as you said.
Yes.
So it's really hard for us to consider those numbers as being a realistic way of funding education in this district.
Yeah. I would, I would like to add to that. The numbers are available for what the average is for school districts across the state spending in terms of comparison between the net school spending number and the actual spending. And when we first started out, we were in the range of 18% or so above net school spending, and that was very close to the state average. As Mrs. Alvanes pointed out, the two major areas where the reimbursement formula has not kept up is in the area of special education and health insurance premiums. So now, we are at about 25% above net school spending, but that is in, really in line with the average across the state, because that, that number is increasing because the special education costs and the health insurance premium costs are rising for virtually every school district in the state.
This is a scatter diagram that we have used, I used this in the K8 presentation as well, I thought it was helpful. We don't have FY17 or 18 as far as per pupil expenditures, but this is FY16, based on interview report reporting. As far as what it costs per student to educate across the state, you can see in the black diamond for our, for our enrollment number, yeah, we're, we're not off the charts, you know, so that's more indicative of what Mr. Pierce was saying, it's, he stole my thunder.
I like this.
As far as what he's saying, we're not completely off the map, so.
Yeah, I would not suggest that we're certainly not off the charts by any stretch of the imagination. It looks like we're right with other schools across the state with an enrollment of approximately 1,000 students. And are even at the lower range of that, because if you look at the box above us, where the range of spending is 15,000 to 20,000 per student, there are a significant number of schools in that box. So I think in terms of where we stand in relation to other districts with comparable enrollment, we're, we're really doing, doing very well and acting very responsibly in terms of our budget.
What was that?
I like that chart.
Oh, okay. I'm glad. One other thing, as far as net school spending is concerned, I will go into a little bit more detail at the public hearing, because I know that when the Board of Selectmen are here, the advisor, financial advisory committees, financial, there are two different, NF and CO. I'm trying to merge them.
Those guys.
Yeah. I know that they like to see some more data when it comes to comparisons, so.
Thank you.
Okay. So as it comes to our FY19 gross operating budgets, I have included FY17 and FY18 as well as FY19. As you can see, there's not too many significant increases in the fourth column over where it says FY19 increase/decrease. The larger ones that I've already touched upon is the technology needs for renewal licenses as well as the special education tuitions. Those are the two big areas where we're needing some additional funding to keep, you know, those two departments where we need them to be. Overall, the gross budget is going up, $464,810. This is just a little pie chart of what that looks like. As I indicated, salaries and benefits 73%. Special education is the larger green chunk, which is 14%, and then you have transportation, maintenance, which is our utilities as well. So those are some additional diagrams for you. The district revenue sources, when we have our gross budget, we include all of our grants in that, and then what we do is we take out what, what we will be spending from those grants. This is a spreadsheet of 1.3 million that is taking our gross budget down. So we started out $60,461,898 as our gross budget. We are using 1.3 million in revenue sources, bringing our operating budget to $15,144. Circuit Breaker is our largest special education state grant. IDA is our largest federal special education grant, Title I. We have our school choice revolving fund that we get for our students that do not live within Somerset or Berkeley. Regional transportation aid, because we are a regional school district, we do get a percentage of reimbursement based on any student who lives outside of a mile and a half of the school. Homeless transportation aid, parking fees, user fees, tech fees, which is the insurance for the Chromebooks, and facility use, and athletic revolving, which is basically our gate receipts at football or basketball games, and some other small miscellaneous income. That total comes to 1.3 million, as you can see here.
And that's, that's down from the previous year.
It is down.
10%.
It's about, it's down about $145,000, I want to say.
Yep. Contributed to...
There's a little bit of a reduction. We had some school choice carryforward money that we used from the prior year, and we're just not getting as much, I think regional transportation's about $10,000 less. I think we had some carryforward in Circuit Breaker as well, if I remember correctly.
We anticipated that in the previous year, and knowing that we wanted to keep the budget reasonable last year, we, we had those carryovers, but we knew that that was going to affect us this year.
This is the historical changes in net operating budget. FY14, our operating budget went up about 6%. FY14, our operating budget went up about 6%, .3 went down 1.2. That was as a result of using a large chunk of extraordinary relief for Circuit Breaker that we received, based on that filing. FY17, we recognized a 5.9% increase this current year, 3.5%, and FY19 is looking at a 4.2% or 614,366. We did have an increase of our operating expenditures, 464,810, which I showed at a previous slide, and also a decrease in revenue sources that Julie had indicated of 149,000. I will say, this does include the $100,000 for special ed stabilization, too. If you were to take that out, you'd lose .7%, so the increase would only be 3.5. This is our capital budget summary. This is finally completed as far as our five borrowings are concerned. We do know what the amortization schedules are for those five borrowings. We have 1.2 million that's due for principal next year, 944,600 in interest. We do have to give back any premiums that we recognize as far as bonding, so we do have to give those back over the life of the loan, and you can see where those subtractions. We take those off the interest payments, essentially reducing the capital assessment for both member towns. So, long-term issuance payments is 2180,295. We're also keeping a stabilization funding level of 10,000 that we have asked for for the last three or four years, I want to say. Grand total for our capital budget, 2190,295. I anticipate that to be pretty level going forward. We tried to keep level funded with our amortization schedule, so there's not a huge fluctuation in principal and interest payments from year to year.
Could I just... I just want to comment on this, because I like to take an opportunity to mention to the community that we were extremely fortunate in this project. The projects that are under consideration now in surrounding communities have made me aware of an issue that is surprising and significant, but when we undertook this project, the estimated per square foot cost was approximately $270 per square foot, and I believe that's the number. Is that going to be on?
I don't recall.
And since our project, the current projects, the estimated cost is over $400 a square foot, so we... our project was bid out at a time when I think the costs were somewhat reasonable and there were... there was a competitive environment. The costs have increased in the seven years or so from about $270 a square foot to well over $400 a square foot, which is being used as the estimated cost for these projects in surrounding communities. And the second aspect for the community, and again, this is more fortuitous than anything else, we offered our bonds in a very favorable interest environment, so that all of our bonds were issued with an interest rate between 2.5% and 3%. And it's unlikely that these projects that are being considered now will be able to issue bonds at an interest rate that favorable. So, I think we were extremely fortunate in this project to bring it in essentially within budget and in a favorable climate, both cost-wise and in financing. So, I think the community can be reassured that the numbers that were originally provided to them were actually conservative numbers.
This is a two-part page. Usually have it all in one, and it's really tiny, so I wanted to blow it up so you could see exactly how the enrollment fluctuation is for both member towns, as well as how it's broken out for what Somerset and Berkeley both have to pay for their operating assessment, as well as their capital assessment. So, I can show you the split here. 985 students is the number I'd indicated. That is a split of Somerset, 724, and Berkeley, 261. I believe Berkeley is recognizing a reduction of about 14 students, and Somerset is... it's on a prior slide, I'm sorry, but I think it's up 20 students. So, Somerset is responsible for 73.5%, and Berkeley is responsible for 26.5%. As indicated before, our total operating budget is 15,144,537, a 4.2% increase, 614,000. The total budget includes the net operating plus the capital, and I can go through that after. Both member towns have minimum local contribution that is indicated to them by the state. Somerset's 4.3 million, Berkeley's 1.5. Then, we have to take into account the amount of minimum local contribution and what we are above that minimum, and then you come to step three, which is your minimum plus your minimum local contribution. Then, Chapter 70 kicks in. The foundation budget is dictated as it's split for Somerset and how it is for Berkeley. Essentially, they take all your foundation budgets for all the school districts that, say Somerset's in, which is Diamond, Somerset-K-8, the high school, and Bristol-Aggie. And Berkeley is the same with Bristol-Plymouth, Bristol-Aggie, Berkeley-K-8, Berkeley High School, Somerset-Berkeley High School. So, they take all those numbers together, they combine all those foundation budgets, and then they give you an allocation just for the high school based on that. So, there's the foundation budget as it's split for both towns. This is what the state is telling us as far as the minimum local contribution, that's this number above, and this is how we back into what each town is appropriated for Chapter 70 money, which is the state aid that kicks in against the assessment. So, Somerset's going to recognize 3.7 million, Berkeley is 1.4 million. Okay. Step five is essentially other revenue sources that come into the general fund that we do have to reduce operating assessments by. We have charter school reimbursements now. We're in our second year of getting charter school reimbursements and also paying for charter school tuitions. We have interest income that comes in based on our banking and interest income that we recognize on our bank statements. We do have Medicaid and E-Rate, which is state funding for technology. Medicaid, we've seen an uptick because our spending is going up when it comes to med therapeutic, we're seeing an uptick in what we're receiving for Medicaid reimbursement. And then we have Somerset's television production studio reduction as it relates to our TV studio agreement with the town of Somerset only, so you see that as a reduction of 80,400. Step six is our total operating assessment after you take all of these things together, where it basically gives you...
Bless you.
9.8 million in total, 7.3 is for Somerset, Berkeley is 2.5. So, Somerset is recognizing a 4.7% increase in their operating assessment for 330,700. Berkeley is recognizing a 1.8% increase in their assessment of 43,205. The reason for Somerset's increase is primarily because of enrollment fluctuations. We're recognizing about 22 more students from Somerset than we had in prior years. Then, we go to step seven, which is our capital assessment. This is strictly based on enrollment, which is the 73,26% split at the top here, and that's exactly how it's split. So, that 2.1 million is split, 1.6 Somerset, 580,000 Berkeley, a 6.3% increase, 95,196 for Somerset, or a 2.9% decrease for Berkeley, or 17,318,000 reduction. All in, the total operating assessments combined for both member towns is 12,57,159. Somerset's at this point is around 8.9 million, Berkeley is 3,085,000.
I was just going to say, that line C up above in step four, that's a subtracted line. That's being subtracted from the line up above that says from step three, correct?
Yep.
So, I don't know if that should be red.
I can make it red for the next one, sure.
Just...
Yeah, because step five's red, too. We should probably make them both red. Thank you for that. Okay.
And let me just ask, on the capital assessment, there's a... because that assessment is done strictly on a per capita basis, and there's a fluctuation in the enrollment, there's an increase for Somerset because of that change in enrollment, but there's also an increase in that line as a result of our final funding. Is it there?
It's up 3.7 in total from last year, 3.7%, which is the first column. You see where it says 77,878, right here? This is the total capital increase.
Okay.
Yep. All right. General fund revenues, I've touched on this before when we looked at the assessment model. This is more of a breakout, 5.1 million for Chapter 70, 3,700 interest, 5,600 charter school reimbursement, 38,200 for Medicaid, 21,000 for E-Rate, and 80,400 for a total of 5,277,673 that gets deposited right into our general fund revenue lines. This is just some financial trends as far as the assessments are concerned for operating only. You can see the change for Somerset as it goes from FY14 to FY19. They're kind of jumpy, but overall, they stay within the $7 million mark for Somerset. Berkeley is seeing a significant jump up from FY14 to FY19. The reason for that is that they're finally at target. This is... FY18 is the first year that Berkeley was at target, which was the plan when we initially regionalized. Berkeley was under target as far as what they were actually spending on education for both K-8 and the high school, so over the last six years, they finally met their target. So, the plan is that however much the operating assessment goes up, or, I'm sorry, the operating budget goes up or down, Berkeley should see a mirror effect based on their assessment for the most part. It's not going to be a significant jump up, even though our budget stays flat, as it has been for years before. Oh, this is where, yeah, 22 students for Somerset, 16 students less for Berkeley for next year. Okay. In summary, we did recognize a 4.2% increase in our tentative budget compared to this current school years. We do have some reconfiguration of specific staffing levels. We have a non-replacement of one ELA teacher who resigned mid-year. We have an addition of the school adjustment counselor, which I'd already touched upon. We also have an addition of a student services administrator that we feel is necessary at the high school at this point to oversee some of the elements of guidance in 504s and scheduling, and we've talked about that in detail when we've had our budget subcommittee meetings over the last months. We did recognize an increase in special education costs, 350,000. This is for tuition and transportation. We looked at the software renewal and the one-to-one initiative. We included the $100,000 in our special education stabilization funding, increased efforts to look for outside funding, private grants, and as I indicated before, there'll be more comparative information on net school spending and how the high school compares at the public hearing next Thursday. So, yeah?
So, are there any questions on the budget from Mrs. Alvin or Mrs. Alvin?
Just a comment more than a question. I think that it's very important as we look forward to an override, which I'll talk about in a little bit more detail when we get to the K-8 presentation, the K-8 updates a little later in the agenda. I think it's very important for the folks in Berkeley to recognize that one of the major drivers of what it costs us to educate our students in this district is population. And certainly, while great care has been taken in the construction of this budget to try to keep things at a reasonable level, I think that you get a kind of a... you can get too comfortable thinking that, you know, this year's adjustment was as small as it was, but it has a lot to do with the fact that we're sending 16 fewer students to the district this year than we were the previous year. So, one of the things we've been talking about in town at the fiscal task force level quite extensively is the impact on our costs that population fluctuation has, not only here, but also at personal public as well. So, even though this is just the back of a napkin calculation, if our population had stayed flat, our assessment would be up roughly $160,000 over where it is right this minute. So, it just... we have to really keep an eye on that and its impact. The models that have been constructed and are moving their way through will allow Berkeley to grow at about 3% a year. Obviously, this year, we had no issue with that, but as you saw that other graph in past years, we've had a significant struggle, and a lot of it had to do with moving towards target share, which we are now at, thankfully. But just as we look forward as a high school community, that's going to be a couple of the challenges is trying to understand and in Berkeley, manage, you know, population shifts, but also here at the committee level, of trying to continue what we've been doing over the past several years, which is keeping a very responsible and well-constructed budget that's within the budgetary parameters of both Somerset and Berkeley going forward.
Yes, and it's also important... it's also important for the regional school district to maintain our enrollment at about 1,000 students in order to maintain the quality of programming that we have at our high school. So, while there's natural fluctuation in demographics in both communities, where in some years you get a larger class, in other years you get a smaller class, it's very important for us to recognize that we're in a competitive environment with charter schools, with parochial schools, and with vocational schools, and we need to be sure that we're out in that marketplace, letting the students know what kinds of programs we have available at our high school and why we think this is an excellent learning environment, so...
To that end, there was an open house that was conducted a little earlier in the year, and I have the good fortune of having an eighth grade student at Berkeley Middle, so I really... I think that was reasonably new, if I'm not mistaken.
It was the first time.
And to be quite honest, most of my daughter's friends who attended, and many of them did, were quite excited about the prospects, and they still can't stop talking about volleyball. So, it's, you know, I think that the high school did make a tremendous advance toward that end this year, and certainly I would hope that that program would continue, if not get, you know, kind of amplified and a little bit larger. But, you know, certainly, Mr. Schoonover, I think, can be commended for the fact that there's a lot of excitement that wasn't there maybe a year ago because of that event.
Good. If I could just add something about enrollments, too, and I know this is looking down the road, and I've mentioned this before, I believe, so not to, you know, we should end on a positive note, and I'm going to bring this down a little bit here, but it's something I think that we believe to keep... we need to keep on the radar. Earlier this week, we had a meeting at the middle school, we were looking at enrollments over the next few years, and I'll just read the Somerset enrollments if I can. Eighth grade, we currently have 201. So, fourth grade through eighth grade, we currently have about 210 students per grade level, and that's a very consistent number, it has been historically for a long time. Our current third graders in Somerset, we drop by about 40 students between our current fourth graders and third graders to 178, which is by far the lowest number of students we've had across a grade level in a very, very long time. The following year, our current second graders in Somerset, it's 157, so about a 25% drop in our students compared to the historical numbers. Grade one, we're at 190, and our current kindergartners are 167. So, we are going to see, and it's not going to be long, before those elementary students are going to be walking these halls of Somerset-Berkeley. And I think Berkeley's numbers have similar trends at that age group, so maybe the population or the percentages will stay about the same, but we are looking, unless we have many families with children moving to Somerset and Berkeley over the next few years, it's not long from now... now where we're going to see the school with a population of about 800 students. That could happen if these numbers don't change. So, I just want to keep that on the radar, and we need to look at those numbers and continue to forecast where we're going to be five to 10 years down the road.
Berkeley's 108 in grade eight, 87 in grade seven, 87 in grade six, 76 in grade five, and these are all net of school choice, because as you know, Berkeley has a reasonably high school choice population. I don't go all the way down to kindergarten, but certainly when I was doing analysis for the fiscal task force, and part of the reason we had this discussion was because of the fact that in the past, when Berkeley's had any kind of change in population, it's been absorbed essentially inside of the general budget and used in other areas. As folks know, Berkeley is having, you know, a struggle year to year with keeping up the increases in different costs in town, so that's historically how it's been done. And looking forward just a few years, it looks like we'll have, you know, the potential at least for there to be a drop in our enrollment, however slightly, for a few years and then an increase. So, I agree with you, there needs to be some sort of forward-looking management to try to give Berkeley to the end line an opportunity to try to figure out how to deal with these things longer term as opposed to just year to year.
Right, because if, and if there is one of those years, say our current grade twos, where we have a really considerable decrease in our student population, if all of a sudden that ends up being an average year, say in Berkeley, that percentage shift really switches toward Berkeley's end, and I'm not sure what effect that would have, I'm sure we can calculate those.
It'd probably be that, it'd probably be pretty awful.
Right. I was going to say devastating, but, you know, but right, but we would have to really predict that and try to do what we can, and as Mr. Pierce is saying, with Diamond looking to do a building project and expand in Brown, Bristol Plymouth doing the same, Bristol Avenue doing the same, not even counting the charter schools, you know, we do have more opportunities for our students to go to these other places, so we're seeing our enrollment dropping and these other ones increasing, so we have to continuously look at that and maintain that competitive edge.
May I ask a question about user fees, which were new in the budget last year? Have they been effective, and are we including them at the same level or slightly different than last year?
We're going to include them at the same level as this year. What we projected is right in line with the revenue that we're collecting, and so we don't see any need to change it right now.
We did see, I know the superintendent has reported to the school committee the fact that it really hasn't had, at this point, an impact on participation, correct?
Correct, through the first two sports, we have the exact same number of participants as we had the previous year.
So we'll continue to watch it, I think, and see how that plays out, but I think it makes sense to keep it at the same level, you know.
So because we're keeping it the same, there's no change in the structure this year?
No. Do we have to have a vote on approving this question?
Yes, yes, I was just waiting to see if there are any more questions.
Great job, Lindsay.
Thank you.
This is a very challenging time of the year for you, but this is an excellent presentation, thank you so much.
So, the process is that this evening, we approve a preliminary budget, and that budget will be available at the administrative offices for any member of the community. Can we post it on our website?
I'll put it on our website, just.
So it'll be available on the website, and there'll be a public hearing next Thursday night here. Our meeting will start at 6:30, but I believe we will, have we advertised the public hearing?
Yes.
And what time did we advertise, at 4:00, 7 o'clock?
Yes.
So the public hearing on the budget will begin at 7:00 PM, and we'll, we often have members from Somerset's advisory and finance committee and the Berkeley finance committee here, as well as any members of the public who are interested in attending, it will be here. We'll have plenty of seating available for people to attend. So, at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the preliminary budget. Some move?
Second.
And let me just, let me get to the end. So, Mrs. Albinaz, if you would just be sure that I'm reading these numbers correctly.
Look at page 16 of the slideshow.
The page is off, remember here. Those are the assessments.
So you want the budget number, the budget numbers where you can see here?
So, as I said, approving a preliminary budget of $15,144,537, and a, an operating assessment of $9,866,864, and a capital assessment of $2,191,889.
Nope.
There was a revision sent out earlier today, so you're probably looking at the latest list.
So, so the operating assessment that I read is correct, and the capital assessment is $2,190,295, of which Somerset operating assessment The Berkeley operating assessment is $2,505,173, and the capital assessment, Somerset's capital assessment is $1,609,922, and Berkeley's capital assessment is $580,373. Motion made by Mr. Larabee and seconded by Mrs. Gagliardi. Any further discussion?
Wait, before we, did you read the 15 million? I just want to make sure we got the, is that okay to have the 15 million, or should it be the total budget of 17,334?
I should, yeah.
So can I, so I know we, I don't know how we do it, we amend? Amend the motion?
Well, we don't, I think we'll just, sure, are we going to amend the motion for the total budget number?
Yes.
About $17,334,832?
Correct.
Move to amend it?
Well, we'll vote on, so we have a motion to amend that, the total budget number. Motion made by Mr. Larabee, seconded by Mrs. Gagliardi. Okay? On the motion to amend, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous? And on the motion to approve the budget and assessments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous? So, the next item we have on our agenda is the superintendent's evaluation. All of the members of the committee submitted evaluations of the superintendent in the format that's provided by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We provide, we prepared a summative evaluation of the superintendent, which includes the comments of all the committee members, and we have, the superintendent's evaluation subcommittee prepared a summary report of the evaluation. Mrs. Field, do you want to present that summary?
Sure, so to reiterate what Mr. Pierce said, the subcommittee, which consisted of myself, Mrs. Gagliardi, and Mr. Pierce, reviewed the evaluations and came up with a summative, which I will report on now for the purpose of the public. The majority of the regional school committee found that the course, through the course of the past year, the superintendent met or made significant progress towards his professional practice, student learning, and district improvement goals. The following goals were presented by the superintendent and the school committee for consideration. The professional practice goal of creating a positive district climate, the student learning goal of 21st century skill development, the district improvement goals of district strategic plan implementation, organizational leadership, and professional learning communities, and data-informed decision-making. Under each of the four standards, the majority of the committee gave the superintendent a rating of proficient. The first standard, instructional leadership, includes instruction, instruction assessment, evaluation, and data-informed decision-making. The second standard, management and operations, includes environment laws, ethics, and policies, and fiscal systems. Family and community engagement is the third standard, which includes engagement, sharing responsibility, communication, and family concerns. The fourth standard is professional culture, which covers commitment to high standards, communication, continuous learning, shared vision, and managing conflict. Overall, there is consensus that the superintendent has continued to serve the district well, make progress in several key areas, and demonstrate proficiency, particularly in the area of professional culture. Stated in the superintendent rubric established by DESI, proficiency is described as fostering a shared commitment to teaching and learning for all administrators with high expectations for achievement for all. In regards to the goals which have not yet been achieved, the superintendent has provided evidence that some groundwork has been laid, and we look forward to continued progress which will ultimately benefit the students and the district as a whole. I don't know if any of the other subcommittee members or committee members have questions or would like to add.
Well, at this point, any, any committee member is free to make any comments from their individual evaluations. So, does anyone have any further comments they would like to make?
I'll just, I'll start. I'll just briefly say that in reviewing this, the evidence and the documentation that the superintendent provided, I think that there was a lot of groundwork laid, as we talked about. I think one of the things that I kept in perspective as one of the school committee members looking at this review was the place from which we started, and really looking at that as being the benchmark, which I kind of measured everything in. So while we certainly would like us to see more advancement, I'd like to commend the superintendent and his team on making the strides that have been made, given some of the deficiencies that we've had prior. So, I'm looking forward to continued work in that area, but I do want to commend it because I think that there's been, it's not always easy to right a ship that has so many layers to it, and I know that you've put a lot in place, and I think that there's a lot of optimism as to where we can go in the future, so thank you.
No?
I'll build on Mrs. Gagliardi's comments as well, and doing my own personal review, and seeing the steps that we've made to move forward in the areas of curriculum, to move forward in the areas of technology, to move forward in the areas of culture. There have been some steps that have been made. We understand that this is not a one-year project, we're interested in long-term changes, not just short-term results. So that's where I have put some of my ratings to say, we have started, we have a great starting point now, how can we continue to move forward? Another example of that is the introduction of the capstone project, that's something that we've been talking about for a couple of years. So I'm very encouraged to see that we've started to lay the groundwork. What I'll be looking forward in future years for future evaluations is now where do we see those common assessments? Where do we see the results from what we've started to put into place? And I just see that as an evolution, but overall, we have come so far in such a short amount of time with the team that you've put together and the work that you've done.
I also think it's important to note, you know, the review and the context of the last 12 months.
Good point.
Because I can't imagine more trying 12-month period, I hope to never have to endure something like that again. The failure of the override in Berkeley created a very uncertain economic environment in my community, and that had a lot of lasting impacts on the high school, including the delay of the one-to-one rollout, which had to manage mid-year, and I can honestly say that through all of it, not only did Mr. Schoonover maintain that wonderful smile of his and his helpful attitude, but he also managed to guide the district through a very, very difficult year. So, I wanted to mention that, and I know from my perspective, as a representative from Berkeley, his leadership was invaluable over the last 12 months.
And to add on to that, in instructional leadership, he was deemed exemplary, professional culture exemplary, which is above and beyond. In data-informed decision-making, exemplary again. Data-informed decision-making, on another page, again, exemplary. And I think there's a couple more, yes. On his law ethics and policies, he was exemplary, and on fiscal systems, exemplary. So that's an outstanding review as far as I'm concerned.
So I would just, I would just like to say, my overall comment was, it is clear from my comments, which are incorporated into the various components of this evaluation, I'm convinced that the superintendent is performing at a proficient level. He has been superintendent for about two and a half years, during which he has assembled his leadership team. That period of time is quite short to implement significant change, particularly in view of fiscal constraints which exist. His efforts to embrace input from many sources, including outside organizations, with expertise in critical areas of public education is refreshing. I believe the superintendent's goals and objectives for the district are positive, and I commend him for his efforts. However, I would also mention that I did have some concerns that I raised. I said I'm concerned that this, I am convinced that the superintendent is committed to high standards, as am I. Many of his initiatives are important steps to maintain and improve student achievements. In my view, we must do everything we can to obtain Level One status for our high school, for the sake of our students and our faculty. I also mentioned my evaluation, another concern that I have also expressed. The computer programming initiative is critically important, and I'm disappointed that we've been unable to fill the teaching position that had been posted. I realize that changes in curriculum are being made in science, but I remain concerned about progress in various areas. So, if that's, everyone's had an opportunity. Mr. Schoonover, do you have any thoughts or comments?
Well, I appreciate all the comments that you have in here, and as I'm developing next year's goals, I will keep those in mind and work with you to figure out which areas that we need to focus on coming up for this coming year. To your last point, Mr. Pierce, I was disappointed... To your last point, Mr. Pierce, I was disappointed as well that we tried to get a computer science teacher here last year, we're unable to find a qualified applicant. I, just on that point, I will let you know that we recently posted that position once again. It is currently on SchoolSpring, and I'm looking right now that we have six applicants. We'll see, I don't know the quality of those, but that did, that was posted on, actually, it was, say, the fifteenth, say, the fifteenth, it was posted today. So hopefully we have, we can check that box off and get a quali, quality and qualified computer science teacher in here, so we can begin giving kids those opportunities in that technology field that we currently are offering them.
All right, so if there are no other comments, we will move on. So, the next item on the agenda is open meeting law violation. I received an open meeting law complaint form within the last several days from Patrick And the complaint focuses on our last joint meeting with the Somerset K-8 school committee, and the complaint reads, Somerset Berkeley School Committee violated the open meeting law by allowing committee woman Julie Ramos-Gagliardi to remotely participate in a joint meeting with the Somerset School Committee without announcing that she was remotely participating, and then the meeting went into executive session without Mrs., without Julie Ramos-Gagliardi stating that no unauthorized people were at her remote location while the meeting would be in executive session as required by the open meeting law. So, as you recall, our, our meeting was at the North Elementary School, and when we convened the meeting, Mrs. Gagliardi was on, on the line. I have not had an opportunity to review the tape of that meeting. I do not specifically recall mentioning that Mrs. Gagliardi was participating remotely, although it was quite obvious. The open meeting law has changed recently, so that it's not necessary to enumerate the specific, one of the specific reasons that had previously been included in the regulations, but simply to state that it was not reasonable and possible for her to be physically present at the meeting. So if I neglected to mention that, it was purely inadvertent, and I know that I have always made reference in the past to the specific reason why someone was not able to participate. Secondly, and I know that Mrs. Gagliardi had submitted to me in writing a request to participate in the meeting remotely for a reason which certainly did make it unreasonable to expect her to be in physical attendance at that meeting. In addition, I had spoken with Mrs. Gagliardi in advance of the meeting and knew that she was going to be in a private location to observe the confidentiality of the executive session, although I acknowledge that I, once again, inadvertently failed to ask her at the outset of the meeting if that was the case. So we may have committed a technical violation of the open meeting law. I'm, I would acknowledge that there was a violation for not specifically asking Mrs. Gagliardi on the record as to whether she was in a private setting, although I had confirmed that prior to the meeting. So it's necessary for us to discuss this at an open session of our meeting before we can prepare a response to Mr. Higgins' complaint. So I don't know if anyone has anything further to add to that. If not, I will file, file a response along the lines that I've just discussed.
I, I just want to say, just so that, I know I don't have to say it, but I did have surgery earlier in the week, and that's why I could not attend the meeting, and I was in a private office where I participated in the executive session.
And I believe you conveyed that prior to pretty much all of the members of the committee, and the committee was aware as to the reason that you weren't going to be present, but nonetheless, I'm assuming that I did not specifically mention that it was not reasonably possible for you to be present, the, and so we will correct that in the future. All right, we have, the next item on the agenda is summer school for students on individualized education programs, IEPs. I believe that was an issue that Mrs. Terror raised. I don't know if, if you're prepared to respond to that.
I, I spoke with Mrs. Terror yesterday, knowing that she was not going to be here this evening, as well as our special ed director, Miss Matija, not being here. I asked Mrs. Terror if she thought it would be reasonable to push that to a, to a future meeting, which she was thankful to have that done.
All right, and as I recall, from our, from our minutes, the two issues that she was raising was more notice to parents that there's, their child might require a summer school program, and, and also she was advocating that students on an individual education plan would not be required to pay for the summer program.
Those are the issues.
So those are the issues we'll address at the next meeting? So next, we have approval of minutes of prior meetings. First is the minutes of the open session of February fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I just, I noticed afterwards, Robin, that the name of the student is incorrect.
Okay.
Luke Perry is from nine oh two one oh, and I think his name is Luke Farrier. I had to read it twice, because it sounded like a very familiar name. Thank you, that was just. So that's the only change I need. I dated myself with that, I'm sorry. It's all right.
Where is that?
Luke Perry. Supposed to be Luke Farrier.
So you have that change. We're going to, we're going to correct the name of the student wrestler who was participating in the regional tournament and in the state tournament. Luke Farrier. And with that correction?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for February, open session minutes for February fifteenth.
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Gagliardi and seconded by Mrs. Field.
I'm sorry.
That's right.
Any further discussion?
It's getting late.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous. Next is executive session minutes of February fifteenth, and you will see that I've also listed, I believe we've also listed that under executive session. So I think ordinarily, we handle executive session minutes in open session because we don't anticipate any discussion, there may be discussion on these minutes, so I'd like to defer that to the executive session. Next is topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair forty-eight hours in advance. I'm not aware of any such issues. Action items for future meetings. I did notice that, let me find the material here. I received an email about the success of our students in the Will McDonough Writing Contest, and I was going to suggest that we might invite those students and their advisor. This was done in an AP English class, and our students were quite successful in, in that competition, and so I thought it might be good to invite them, so if we could, probably not next week, because we have a pretty full agenda, but perhaps for the following meeting, you could speak with their student advisor and see if they would like to attend our meeting.
Can I mention one thing, Mr. Pierce? Number four, on the K-8 updates, I'll be very, very brief. I just want to mention, this is Read Across America Month, so I hope a lot of parents will communicate with the students and the teachers who are going to read to them. I read to the kindergarten classes in Berkeley, and I love doing it with the little ones, especially they get very talkative. So that's all I did want to mention, please, and I urge parents, if they have so in their budget. Kohl's always has a special on books that are for children, and they're only five dollars each, so if you could buy one or two and bring them into your schools, I think that would be a great idea. Thank you.
And if I could?
Yes.
The Fiscal Task Force in Berkeley met several times over the last month, and the override of eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars is going to be presented to the Board of Selectmen on next Wednesday, March the twenty-first, at six P.M. Eight hundred and seventy thousand dollar override would allow for the re-establishment of the stabilization funding model that had existed in Berkeley prior to last year, based on the current cap of a three percent average annual assessment increase. That would allow the eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars to last roughly eight years, which is a two-year difference from the model that we proposed last year. Conversation has included members of our Board of Selectmen, as well as the Chair of our Finance Committee, our town, town accountant and town treasurer, and a couple of members of the Berkeley community at large. So we're optimistic that the Board of Selectmen will approve the request and put the override on the ballot for our election in, on May eleventh.
It's in May?
Yes.
Not, not July.
So, it was last year, the, the override was handled in a different format, and the election was held in July. But this year, we're anticipating, based upon current timeframes, that we'll be able to get it onto the ballot for, for that May eleventh election. Just keep you guys in the loop, because that time is long.
Positive news.
Yes.
All right.
By the way, we'll be there with our nineteen students going to the international, our Selectmen wanted to meet them and greet them, so we'll be there on the twenty-first also with our students.
Our students, our students will be going to the Selectmen's meeting?
Yes. The Selectmen wanted to meet all these geniuses, so I've written.
Yeah, it's a very interesting, long agenda, so if you have nothing better to do, Berkeley Town Hall at six P.M. next Wednesday.
So, at this time, I would entertain a motion pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One-E Three, to enter executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Somerset Teachers Association units A and B, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public, of the school committee, and the chair so declares. Also pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One-A Four, to discuss the employment of security personnel and devices, or strategies with respect thereto, and pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-Two-G One, to review the minutes of executive sessions to determine if the provisions of this section warrant continued non-disclosure, specifically executive session minutes of February fifteenth to two thousand and eighteen. The committee will not return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session. I have a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Mrs. Gagliardi and seconded by Mr. Larrabee. Is there any discussion? In the absence of discussion, a roll call. Mr. Giliducci?
Aye.
Mrs. Field?
Aye.
Mrs. Gagliardi?
Aye.
Mr. Larrabee?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I would, I would note that we have a matter other than related to collective bargaining to discuss in executive session. I believe that Mrs. Field will refuse herself from any discussion with respect to negotiations with the Somerset Teachers Association, so I'd just like to note that on the record. Is that correct, Mrs. Field?
Correct.